Think if I push that, I think we're ready to rock and roll from what I hear, so.
I was just gonna hold for a couple more minutes. It's a little more difficult for people to get up here.
Okay. Not a problem.
I think we'll just. Okay, so we'll call the public work session with the Allen County Commissioners and the next Board of Trustees. The session, we start off all of our board meetings with the pledge. I did see there's a couple of flags out this way, so if everyone could rise and join me in the pledge, I think. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So we have a meeting called the order. We follow the pledge. We'll go to the next, the first item on the agenda after that, which is our audience comments. Kristen, no audience comments at this time. All right, then we'll move into section 1.04, which is the potential for traffic light signal and trail affecting Maple Creek Middle School. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the county.
Yeah. Sure. Well, with us today, we've got Brian Sackler, we've got Dan from NERC, Bill from Highway, and Laura from Highway. Okay. I don't know where, if you guys wanna start. I am aware of the problem with some brief conversations with the superintendent, but I am certainly not an expert in how we've gotten to this point, so.
Well, I guess I can start off. What was done was the request came in that a traffic signal was wanted at the intersection of Maple Creek and Union Chapel Roads. And so for us to pick it up, we have the certain warrants. We follow the MUTCD.
We got it, Nelson.
If I just stand here.
Then, uh, we, anyway, we have to follow a process, so we needed to find out if the intersection actually met warrants for, or the signal.
You might explain what warrants are.
Uh, warrants, basically, if we check all the MUTCD guidelines and we check to see if it's manual and uniform traffic control devices.
Thank you.
And it's a standard that's across the United States. Entire United States follows these standards. Every state in the continental US follows the same set. So, you know, every stop sign, same size, same color, same lettering, everything. That's basically what this is. And in this, it tells you, well, gives you guidelines, what you need. And so, anyway, the warrants for a signal, there's eight different warrants. I can't name them all off the top of my head, but I know it's the amount of traffic that passes through an intersection. That's the amount of time that a car needs to sit before it can actually move through the intersection. That's another warrant. The amount of pedestrian traffic. It looks at all different factors. The amount of accidents at an intersection also looks at. So, anyway, we asked NERC to, Northern Indiana Coordinating Council, that's who that is, and to run warrants, see if, or run the analysis and see if the intersection made warrants or not. So they did, and the results came back. There's no warrants met for, or a signal at that intersection, so.
I might wanna back up because we probably jumped right into the pieces here, but I wanted to give you some more background, I guess. August 22nd, 2022, the Board of Trustees at that time have a work session at the proposed site where this would, would this be, there was action that evening to be taken on a potential grant of right-of-way, sale of right-of-way space and putting in the trail. And so the board did a work session at that intersection, at that, that site, to just watch the traffic flow, to watch the volume of traffic, the right turn, left turns, actions going on. At about 5:30, I think it was a 5:00 or 5:30 meeting, I can't remember the exact time, but anyway, the board did that. There were a few other, I think, Brandon, you might have been there, I know. Then we actually went to a session, and in that board session, the request for the trail where it was as defined was defeated zero to five by the board. So we took action to deny the, the request. Multiple reasons, but one, I believe, was, was the safety concern crossing the entrance at Maple Creek right there where we have two elementary schools and one middle school drop off and pickup traffic with kids in cars and little kids and, you know, there's, you're making a left turn when you're eastbound, when the first opening, and you know, there was a concern. So that's why all this other stuff started. So I, I guess I wanted to give a little pre fix, just to make sure you were caught up on what happened. So since that time, I know that there was a, a grant that went out and we off, we said, yeah, we would work with the, the county to discuss potential trails to allow them to go with a grant. But we've had no other discussions as a board with anyone regarding this trail itself. So on the surface, the way it was laid out for us initially, the board rejected it, the board in 2022 rejected it zero to five. So just that's, I'm laying out safety concerns. I mean, Steve, you, Kristy, Liz, you were all on the board at the time. I think that was a consensus of what we concluded in that meeting and that work session. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
And it even gets busier from 3:30 till 5 o'clock.
Yeah.
With buses, not only just parents in and out, but you've got buses in and out.
Arrival and dismissal times.
It's just a dangerous intersection. And my wife's a school bus driver, and she vouches for that. She's like, it's, that is not a good spot. It's just a dangerous spot.
Anyway, I just wanted to level set that for those that weren't participating in that previously or haven't lived as long as we have. That, that is, so, yeah, I appreciate your work there, but I realized we sort of jumped on chapter three instead of open the page one, so we can go from there. So sorry about that.
No, quite all right, quite all right. Also, you've got, you've got a little bit of the, of the history of what they've seen at that particular intersection and why certain decisions may have been made regarding that, that intersection. I don't know if y'all wanna follow up.
I guess, yeah, like I said, the warrants, we ran them, didn't meet. I think it was like 45 minutes the entire day that I actually met warrants for a signal, is what we received. Normally, we look for an eight hour time use, you know, a need for a signal, and we only receive about 45 minutes. So.
When you say, when you say guidelines with that alphabet M, whatever they are, they are, to me, a guideline is not a rule. Is that a fair statement? A non-affair statement? Are exceptions made? Can there be exceptions made? Talk through that.
Well, it's, it's.
It's manual and uniform.
Take that one. Indiana code requires that we follow the MUT, the Indiana version of the MUTCD. And so it very explicitly states that that's what we have to follow, and it has the specific guidelines in there. And if it doesn't meet those warrants, then the signal shouldn't be put in. Shouldn't be put in.
Can't.
Can't, can't, you should.
Shouldn't.
I'd have to pull the, the.
Okay. But. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just asking, you know, I'm just trying to walk through if there's exceptions to be made. Can there, can exceptions be made? That's.
Well.
I would say, when you, when you're meeting only an hour or two of the day, that's not a reasonable timeframe to do it. If you're, if you're, say, you make seven out of the eight hours, and then you know there's gonna be some additional development coming, then that might be a reasonable time to say, let's pull the trigger and put a, a signal in. But when we're only meeting, we did the analysis. One warrant met for two hours out of the eight hours needed. The other warrant, one warrant met for zero out of the eight. And then warrant, the combined warrant met zero of eight and three of eight. So we're extremely, I'm quite a ways away from.
I wouldn't argue with you that from a, from a normal life situation, it's not, it's not good. I'm, I'm, I would argue more from a safe, those 45 minutes from a safety concern are significant if we're gonna put a trail through here. I guess that would be my, my argument for, for some sort of signal faced, something.
We have a lot of busy intersections that rails through them, and we don't have a problem with them. They're much busier than what this particular driveway is.
Yeah.
So one of the reference, and, and we have other schools in the region that have trails and, and have access points, and we don't see, we don't have a history of, of issues at them, just again, a reference.
What, what schools are those? If we could just kind of see those.
Did and avoid, I mean, there's a trail that crosses.
Woodside Middle School, Jefferson, Portage. I think you even have one in Yale River sidewalk or sidewalk or trail. I mean, sometimes sidewalks are busier than trails, so they're kind of one in the same. Got them at Hunter Town School. Miami Middle School, Leo Junior, Senior High.
What's the difference between just your everyday average sidewalk, though, and these trails that predominantly are getting more and more used these days? There's more bikers, there's more joggers taking advantage of this, and it's a beautiful trail system. People are realizing that, and they're starting to use that more and more. And I think maybe that's gonna get more use than just an average sidewalk.
It's, it's really relative to what the laying juice is around it. And, and sometimes with the trail, it's how attractive the trail is. For instance, the section that's up off of DuPont Road by the YMCA is a very, you know, nice trail. It generates a lot of traffic. The Foster Park Trail generates a lot of traffic. So they vary widely. We have, we monitor a number of trail counters, kind of keep track of the amount of traffic.
Do you know the trail, I mean, obviously, schools in session May till May and out. Do you, do you have any kind of information that talks to the usage of the trails during our school time? Because when it's summertime, obviously, it's gonna get their most use for a trail in reality, this one, weather's nicer, but during those school timeframe, do you have any usage on that in your heavier areas and what that would be early in the morning compared, you know, during our commute times?
Yeah, we have the, the trail data broken out by hour that we could take a look at a couple locations and give you you know, when the peak periods are and yeah, we, they tend to be springtime picks up and through the fall. And then when it gets real hot, you'll see a, a dip in the usage, but yeah, we can give you a few different locations that shows the months and the times, day that see in the most activity.
I agree.
See what, we'll try to find one that's in the vicinity out there, but I don't know exactly all the locations that we have.
Monitor encounters now.
Yeah, I know Matt and I, we looked at a counter that was, that was the Homestead and a Boy. As he wanted to pull up, he wanted to see what our busiest, busiest intersection was, and he found that it was the one right there at Homestead. And it wasn't during school time. It was actually in the summertime after school was let out. But I believe it was a Saturday. I don't know that for sure, but we can pull that data and we can get it to you.
Great. So the, the trails, I think have been in large part what's driven outside the schools, what's driven a lot of the growth in Northwest Allen County. People kind of like them. They like the connectivity. They like to be able to get out and do some of the things they do. Are, are there alternatives that come immediately to mind that if not there, then where?
I think we had originally talked about, and that's a great, great question. We'd comment, I know I have brother-in-law who uses trails all the time and comes up to see us. He lives down by Dwanger, so. And he comes up and cuts down Corbin, cuts through our park, our driveway and comes out across in the subdivision, rides the subdivision. So obviously avoids the heavy traffic areas. But we had talked about, and again, going with our current project, which also will have now a sidewalk from Union Chapel and Coldwater North, that if we were to take that all the way north, you know, to the end of our property and then cut across, that would avoid, because there's a light there at Perry Hill and Oakview Entrance. And I know we're already working on, I believe, some walk signals as well, right there. That's part of our, our project, I guess, with I'm checking with the folks, I just learned about that picture, but there is gonna be a, a signal to push button to cross. You could cross Coldwater Road from the subdivision across Coldwater, and you could also cross driveway there at Perry Hill. That gives us comfort that there is something there to stop cars from making the quick, you can't stop everything, but if you took it all the way north and cut it back across, then it'd be to the north side of our property, which goes all the way down to the woods. We would, I would think we'd have to talk to our community and that, but we said, let's move it away from the busy section of the school, but then still provide nice, nice path there.
So in what I.
It's much more, it's beautiful, I think, coming through the woods.
Okay, so it goes north, where? On, on Corbin?
You didn't, it ended up coming over here on Corbin, which is north of the.
And gets to Coldwater. Is that what you're saying, Mike?
Say you could go up north on Coldwater, you got, get the map here. I would say take it all the way up, and I mean, I think the water tower is owned by the city, so you put it right along there if you want to between the two of that, and just take it along that north side of our property, all the way down to Corbin. You know, we already got Buldesac right there. You bring it, bring it along that side there, and then however you wanna tap it in, whether it's.
It does cross Hathaway here too, doesn't it?
It will cross Hathaway up here, the trail will.
So you've got a barrel down here, and it crosses, and you've got Hathaway here where it crosses. So somebody could ride all the way up to here, come down, and come in around here.
Right. Was it, wasn't this design in part supposed to get people from the south side of Union Chapel on the trails, right?
Yeah, the, yeah, the purpose why we ran it up along Union Chapel is to service the communities to the south.
So how, with what they've just suggested, is there a way to do that? There a way to, you know. I have, I've got, I've got security issues with that from my perspective. You're gonna put a trail behind this, behind the school in the woods where there is no ability to monitor someone coming in the backside of the school. That's a concern to me, unless that's fenced all the way through, which even the fence isn't gonna do much, but that's a concern I would have. I don't, nobody's thought through that, that, that concept, but you're gonna have everybody coming through there in the back of the day, and I. Nothing was thought through that, that, that concept, but you're going to have everybody coming through there in the back of the day, and I don't know where the playground is, but it's right there, right? The backside of the playground is right there.
I love that. That's a great idea.
You know, we've had that, you had that one fatality right there on, on, uh, I mean, that was shortly after that when we had this discussion. You know, Union Chapel North Side, you know, from Auburn Road. It's like, well, utilities to be moved yet and things like that, because the trail, the, the trail's right at that first subdivision there on the far east side of it. So the folks on the south side are still going to have to cross Union Chapel, which we already know that Coldwater's widening, and I have no idea what's happening with Union Chapel, but. We're going to have, what, four lanes or five lanes right there at the corner of Union Chapel. That's what the city had unplanned, I believe, right there, Union Chapel and Coldwater. So it's, it's not the most desirable place to be. Crossing, I guess, but what we say is we already have to put a sidewalk because of the. NERC or whatever the, is that pronounced right? Requirements along the admin building. It's like, let's just take that north, take the trails on the north side, and that would have been, uh. And our perspective avoids the in and outs. If, if you've never driven there or never been around there. We had Dr. McKibben who came in and did, um. Our demographic study to help us. How are we going to put kids in what schools within what middle school feeders? He actually sat at the Tim Hortons and, uh, said he's drinking his coffee and doesn't know how, somebody doesn't get killed there every day. He said the traffic there is crazy. This is a man who lived in our district for years, who sees a lot of travel. He did, I don't know how many schools he's working on now, but he commented, I mean, he made that. Unsolicited comment as he sat there and drank his coffee in the morning, which is exactly when we have the drop offs, when we have the pickups, the. Buses coming in and leaving, parents coming and leaving. It's, it's, it's a, well. Got admin people here at the building. It's, it's a. If you come late, it's a pretty hairy place.
So how do you, help me understand if, if. I think what I heard is maybe you go on, yeah, from Union Chapel, Coldwater, go north. But there seems to be the, uh, the concern that you expressed about the safety going west across the back of the property. How do you create the connectivity? That this in large part is designed to do?
We, we have, we just said, we haven't looked at all the details, but we were flat out told, no, you don't want to go take it north period. And so. Our part is we don't want to cross our driveway, so we're kind of at a, a standstill here on that, that position there. I mean, you're connected. About a mile south on Dupont. I mean, Pufferbelly connects to Dupont, which connects then to Parkview, which. May not connect right at that spot. Without a formal trail, you still can get there now. Through that subdivision, if people want to still do that right now. Uh, people do that now, uh, so. I don't, I don't know how you want to handle that. I, we just know we don't have a comfort level with a crossing. At that spot on where we have a lot of traffic and safety concerns. I mean. Yeah, can you imagine? I mean, you're eastbound, making a left-hand turn, waiting for that first opportunity. There's an opening. And somebody on a bike. Cuts right through there as you're making a left turn. You, you're not looking backward. You're looking. Ahead to make that turn, and that's what we, we saw that repeatedly. People shooting across very quickly.
With kids in the car, you know, as a parent, I think about that, that most of our drivers do have kids they've picked up from school or that they're trying to hurry and drop off and. Our youngest is only a sixth grader now, so he's not. In middle school yet, but I still, even at a much smaller school, you know, it's, I'm still trying to make. Good decisions and there are times when. That decision at that kind of an intersection is different than my average driving.
Yeah, if anything, you'd have to pull it back to, to eliminate that safety concern, which I, I agree. It's, you're, you're, you're going when you can go is to pull the, the, the trail crossing actually. Back probably thirty, forty, fifty feet so you can make the turn, and you're not making the turn and going where the trail.
When you say back, are you talking about going north?
North. North, yeah, so making it in here versus coming back toward the edge of the road. It'd come back here and then go back, jog back that way.
Right.
Because that way you're at least avoiding. The person who's coming up, trying to make the turn and keep it on, keep on going. Hey, there's an opening. I'm not stopping. Nobody stops. They just keep right on going. I mean, your cameras probably showed that. Your four cars back and it's open. Everybody just keeps running going, just like a stoplight.
Right.
So with a, with a traffic light, do, does that issue go away?
We sort of felt that we, we, we already talked about it with, on the. Coldwater side, right? With the ability to. Push a walk button and to stop traffic all ways. You could get across there. Uh, that would be acceptable. I know originally there was, our safety concerns were going to be met with additional signage. Well, this is the entrance to one of our main schools and. Much as the signs right by our road is probably not going to be the best way for. And, and we would have to do more work, or whether it's be simple to sell the piece. It is an access point for us that we, you know, we obviously have, would have to be crossing that. Further north we go, we've already been told we've got, you know, drainage issues with. That, which I don't know if that was actually even looked at. You know, the, the main place where this. Trail is going is underwater pretty much every spring. Just because of the elevation difference. We're what, six foot, five, six foot different between the road and the, and ground there, so.
But you're, that's the Coldwater?
Coldwater Corner, Coldwater Union Chapel Corner is basically underwater. I mean, there's probably ducks there right now or geese.
Well, this corner.
Yeah.
This was, it's always underwater. It's, I mean, it's five, it's five foot different elevation between that. Ground and. The roadway. Easily.
If we did it on the north and. Proposed putting a fence in there, I think. I mean, somebody can climb a fence, you said. Just as easy as somebody can come up any of these drives that they're already using and walk to the back of the school and.
If you're better. Better deterrent than anything else.
But it, you know, maybe put up a taller fence than what we have around the front of the property.
That's where that request came in though, for the traffic light study was the board's concern about those cars being able to turn, and then you've already got. Traffic lights, these intersections already in place. You're not adding more expense. As far as that goes, and you're still having the safety. For both pedestrians and. Children.
I mean, remember, we have. Some of those other schools are nice comparisons, but we're talking now two elementaries, a middle school and a transportation depot. And administration building all on the same campus. Little bit more traffic than just a single middle school. And there's only, right now, the buses really only come in, I believe they come in two, two routes. They will exit three different, all three spots on that, on that campus, but they really enter for dropping off. Only two spots and ones with the light and ones back here at the, the Union Chapel.
So you've got, I think, more construction going on there, and that will include what?
So. If you look at this map here. This barn right here is now gone and will be our administrative building.
Okay.
So we are freeing up space from one of our elementary schools where the administration is now, and it will be going in here. So we understand, yep, there's going to be an access. We're, we're going to have a road, I believe, that's going straight across from this other road here. But then there will be a sidewalk all the way up to that, and there will be a sidewalk all the way up here to, this is the Perry Hill Oakview entrance. Uh, main drag driveway. So my understanding is we will be putting in a sidewalk with this project. All the way from Union Chapel, all the way north to the north side of the entrance of Perry Hill and Oakview Elementary. So. That's what's going on there, but yes, we all have an administrative building right here.
Yeah, well, what I'm trying.
Access off of, directly off of Coldwater.
Okay.
So that's where.
But what I'm trying to get to is have a better understanding of what might be built. That, that might, uh, include more personnel or more cars that might change the warrants.
Well, we're going to be bringing what, who is not in? The admin building. I think IT is all going to be coming here. Uh, what else? Is there anything else that's going to be?
Time of day, though. I don't think it's going to change. It's not going to change the time of day.
Time of day will be still be the same. Well, it might be a little bit earlier and a little bit later, but yeah.
Not enough. I mean, we.
And with the separate entrance, you're actually going to have fewer. In theory.
Well, they'll be coming down, they'll be coming down that road, but.
Right.
All these roads will.
Entrance itself, which is the one that we monitor for, for the warrant. So have less traffic.
Unless it's going to connect.
Could you take the trail all the way up to Coldwater to Gump and then tie it in? Because you know, you've, you've had part of the trail. Along Gump Road.
The Pufferbelly goes up to Gump.
Right. Could you take it up to that?
Are you talking, the Coldwater sidewalk?
Yeah, just take the Coldwater and you guys.
Plan is, yeah, the plan is to get a sidewalk all the way up to Gump.
Okay, and then you could go west and tie into that.
As more properties develop, we'll continue that sidewalk farther and farther.
Then we'll be crossing that school.
Well, yeah, true.
We only have, it was only to the.
Yeah.
West of our, um, of road entrance now. That's where the trail dead, dead ends right there, the driveway.
Big bridge.
Are there safety concerns from our administration, um, running? If we've run that more along the woods, is that something that?
Yes.
Okay.
Those, we have those safety concerns. Dr. Bidding and I both are concerned about bringing people. Out of the woods who, with, with the playgrounds being that close. I, I would, if they could safely be done. This keeps them farther away from having access to our students.
Okay.
But if it can't safely be done, then that's, that's just a different problem. But we do, Dr. Bidding and I and others share those concerns.
Okay.
About that in the back.
With the trail crossing up at Union Chapel Road, the trail would run in front of the stop sign, so people stopping at the stop sign. Or the intersection, at the actual trail, you know, people, pedestrians would be crossing in front of any traffic. But really, the trail is supposed to stop for anybody leaving.
But let me ask you this. I, I understand that, because that's, we were just talking about that this morning. You're at a school and you see a crosswalk. Who do you think has right of way? I think the students have the right of way. Our students crossing right at Hunter Town. I'm sure every driver lets the students go, even though that's considered part of a trail. I.
Pedestrians always have the right of way.
Not on trails. So I'd say it's downtown, you're correct. You have city sidewalks here. And you're crossing there.
Right.
But if you have a sidewalk by a school or a trail by a school, you're going to think it's a school crosswalk and would have the right of way. I don't know how you wouldn't. Of course, like, as a, if I'm a driver and I'm at a school and I see kids coming up to it, I'm stopping. I'm not saying is you need to stop because I know that this is the trail and you don't have the right of way. That's my, you know, again, you're at a school. You can clearly see this is a school. Right here, and that would be the, the issue there. But I do agree. I mean, there's more knowledge going on, more understanding, because trust me, I've been on. Coldwater Road and seen cars completely stopping in the middle of the road, flagging people on, which we don't want that to happen.
What are your thoughts, I, I guess, on pulling it back off the intersection instead of having it at the intersection? What are your guys' thoughts? What are your thoughts? I mean, for me, that makes. More sense from a visual. Because you've got the, the median in the middle with the, the, the sign and all that. That keeps anybody's visual. Still from a traffic standpoint, and then it puts the visual here. Far enough away that you can see it if you're turning in, you can see someone coming.
Move it back here.
Correct, yeah, wherever.
We talked about that when we were out.
Yeah, wherever that may be.
Yeah.
Wherever that may be.
Doing that.
What are your? Is that?
My opinion is. You don't typically anticipate people be walking that far back from the street. And you're actually going to be putting them in, in between moving cars. It's best to have them in the line of sight when they pull up and they stop. They can see both ways. That's where we expect people to be. That's our expectation with almost every cycle. We do have some locations where that has happened. I've never been in favor of that.
I can see if really two different directions coming versus here, you got one direction in theory. That kind of makes sense.
So people that are turning, going eastbound off of Union Chapel and won't like. Just make an immediate turn and.
Well, they should see.
They've got clear line of sight. We're here, here they won't have clear line of sight because there's, there's the sign, there's, there's shrubbery, there's cars. Thirty feet in and they're going, yeah.
And they don't expect people to be crossing there.
That makes sense. It does. It makes perfect sense.
I look at though, from a safety point of view and think, well, when a child's dead. Or some poor lady walking her dog's dead, you can't say, well, she should have. You know, this driver should have. Or should have seen her. It's just a congested area. Because after that point, it's too late. Trying to prevent. Actually, I'd say we're trying to prevent that casualty before we get to that, you know? And basing off of a should have.
Children in the equation for me is the hard part. If we didn't have children in it, I, I would be a different, I would have a different mindset, but.
If any of you have taken your kids or grandkids to school for drop off, I've done that many years. By the time you leave the parking lot, you're so frustrated. I don't care what school you're in and how they engineer the drop offs and this and that, put cones out. You're just ready to get the heck out of there, you know? And you get to that point and you're coming out, and like you said, you get that. You're looking real quick and you get that.
The ones in the backseat, I just.
And you just go for it.
Parent drivers.
All of a sudden, a kid on a bike comes by or some lady walking her dog or jogging comes by. At that point, you know, you're sorry. I should have saw her, but. It's too late at that point.
Have there been any incidents where the trails have crossed other school properties? Have there been any incidents or accidents at, at those sites?
I can't say I'm aware of any.
Neither.
At those larger ones you mentioned, um, where you, you can get that data, or do they have lights at those or not? Like at home.
I was, I was, uh, the ones I was referencing don't have traffic signals. At, at home. Now, some, there are, of course, you know. But Carol has, you know, a couple of signals where the sidewalk or trail crosses, but the ones I was referencing. Do not have any traffic signals.
Is there a way to get that data of accidents that have happened or if they have?
I mean, trails are maintained by the county, correct?
County.
County, yeah.
The county's responsible for it. So they have a liability, so.
Not all.
The county.
So there was, we have, we had challenges, some challenges. You didn't trim back and I couldn't see the bicycles to what? So county's responsible for that, right?
Most of them, yeah.
I mean, the ones that are in Allen County, yeah. The ones that aren't. I know there's transitions from trail to sidewalk to trail. I mean, yeah. Because I was told before, I believe that the county does not, like, winter time, ice and snow. Use the trail at your own risk is how it is. With us, our sidewalk will be clean because the sidewalk is our responsibility, is part of our building. So, you know, there is a.
Yeah, I understand.
We'd have to forward all calls to county when they complain that our trail sidewalk is not cleaned if there was. If kids are trying to walk it, that would be that. I understand, and by the way, Pufferbelly is a beautiful trail, just a great use of the old railroad. I mean, it's an awesome idea, so. I grew up in Wells County. There's a couple of old railroads down there. I'm like, I wish they would use that, that one around two twenty-four and fix it, but. No, it's, it's, it's a great use of it because there's no one developing on it, so you've got a nice. Uh, segue, but no.
So I hear a potential solution that you might be amenable to is a traffic light. If that's not possible, are there other ideas? What else can work out there? How do we create the connectivity? That the people that you and we represent. Desire.
I think we'd have to get, I mean. We always said if it had been south of Union Chapel, there wouldn't have been a, a comment made, right? Because.
That's what I was just thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they're ever.
Clearly, clearly, I think you've probably done all your work on the north side already, uh, at least all the way up to, uh, Coldwater. I mean. It wouldn't be an issue there unless, you know, again, somebody, some kid, or somebody's trying to cross the trail to the school. That would be. That, that's.
What was the, what was the south side issue? Was it the number of parcels? Was it?
Well.
We did have that discussion.
Yeah, all the trail is on the north side of Union Chapel. From basically the church all the way to. Auburn Road.
But is there a way to make some connectivity from the south side?
And that portion of that segment, maybe.
There's a lot less.
It would help our student.
Between those driveways. Then there's art, but then there is art.
Our kids walk that, if they are walkers, they walk on that south side to get to the neighborhoods. I'm not from this area of our district, but when I have driven that around dismissal time, I am unnerved. In the winter months especially, because we have children that walk on that opposite side of the road where a trail would serve them.
To get them in place.
Right, it is that, that neighborhood that they're trying to get to. I don't know.
Note that. And I'll look over maybe at Brandon. We only have one or two mandatory walk. Sub, subdivisions, like the one right there by Cedar Canyon, I believe.
We actually don't have any mandatory.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, every one of our, at this point in time. Um, all of our students do have a access to a bus, and we've got some areas that definitely can access and walk. Mandatory, we have none.
We're unique from the other public schools, really, who have mandatory walk zones for. Elementary's a half mile and up to high school being mile, a mile and a half. So we don't have as much. Wirement for that. I mean, I know you guys put some sidewalks out by Wayne High School recently, I think, because. Those subdivisions down, um. Dunk, uh, Dunkle Road, I think. There was no way for those kids to really get to the school on the white zone. So they had to walk on the berm and stuff like that. So I can understand with those types of things with a school, but we. So I can understand with those types of things with a school, but we we we've been able to use our tier busing system. And so far, so good. I've been able to be, now there are some kids that walk. We actually, uh, subdivision right at Cedar Canyon, we actually ran a sidewalk purposefully between uh, our property all the way out to the back of that property so that they could, students in that subdivision could walk safely across without ever getting close to a road or anything like that. So we're not opposed to that. The problem really is that this is a very busy area. Um, I know that we have a couple of new apartments and retirement living and a couple of other things going on. Carol Road east of, uh, three, with that roundabout going there, they're going to be east turn only, you know, they're not going to be able to make a western to three. So we may get more traffic coming down to Coldwater Road from that direction. I don't know. I mean, they made you use a roundabout and go back. I mean, that but it it could be pretty busy there. I think that the roundabout's being done, I think, by Hunter Town, but yeah. So we're just, I think we're going to have more traffic there than we already have, just FYI, I believe, given what's being developed right now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the the concern from back in twenty twenty two is safety. I think it's it's you know, I I feel for anybody that's had an accident where someone's had a a tragedy and someone has passed. I can only imagine a parent of young kids or a bus driver and just what that does to the community. Um, it it's rough anyway, don't get me wrong, but when it's something on on your property, that makes it a lot more difficult.
No question.
So that's.
So I would be even more apt. I know you're not going to go for this, but we don't want it there. Some of us don't want it there. Some of us don't want it there, coming right up the middle this way.
Heard about that.
Around the bus, I mean, because you, you've got the liability.
Being law or you know.
On our property, but they're on our property here and they're on our property there. So there's still some.
That would be on ours. It'd be, it'd be.
Maybe theirs.
Okay.
It'd be theirs.
But that. So we, so we couldn't come up the middle that way.
I mean, the tire already doesn't now.
It's the route people use today. That's why it's.
People, people, they're already using it. People are out there playing tennis.
Riding their bikes.
They're playing baseball. They're, I mean, they're using these grounds whether we're here or not, whether we give them permission or not, so.
So I've got to the middle of the property, then where do we go?
You'd come up, um, through around here and you'd end up back here at the light.
Okay, I got you.
Come down.
Yeah.
And whether that's painting some sort of a dashed line or something down there where people can follow that, it's already.
Or you run a parallel, you run a parallel to the driveway.
Yeah.
That'd be like more sense.
You run a parallel to the driveway right.
Over on the west side.
Right past the tennis court.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it would be between the Oakview and Maple Creek buildings toward the, um,
Traffic lane.
Toward the, well, I'm going the other direction now, but toward the, um, transportation hub.
And there aren't playgrounds around that, right?
Correct. Little school doesn't have recess. Do they?
No.
No. Tennis courts, the PE classes use the tennis courts.
Very rarely.
For the one week session.
Yeah, I'm not very much right.
Even if you came from the tennis courts and came straight out.
Yeah, that's my thing too.
Instead of using our, bringing them in towards our parking lot there, just come from the tennis court straight out.
Yeah.
On the north side of the baseball fields.
Well, baseball fields are going to kind of.
Be gone.
Well, they're getting pressured because I think that's what some parking is going to be there, right?
Yeah, there's going to be a sidewalk that actually connects connects over to Perry Hill from the new administration center.
So from the barn.
So they answer your question. Where can we kind of meet in the middle?
Maybe literally.
Literally, that's where we're meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's more advisable, and again, from your safety concern from the from the playground stuff.
As I was in the live building stand.
I think.
Are we gonna, are we giving them right of way or or making a new trail or using part of existing structure?
Yeah.
It's already there.
Details, but I mean, that's that's.
Well, there are big details from a liability standpoint. I'm not a fan.
Liability, I, I'm not taking the liability for.
Right. That's what I'm saying is. Structures, we talked through if you even think that's a viable solution, if that's not a viable solution, if it is, do we have to give you the right of way to get us off the liability side? Assuming we do, so does that mean we have to, uh, increase the size of the roadway or can we do it on existing roadway? How does that, is there a requirement for the size of the trail? It has to be the certain size? So it has to be a certain size. That means we're giving up part of our roadway.
The other thing too, that idea, just looking at this and just driving there every day, there's not space to encroach on the football fields. You're not going to be able to go unless like, that's going to be really tight. I I don't think there's enough space there. But you you would be eliminating, the only way to do that would be eliminating the parking for the drivers on that side.
Right.
If you stick on the south side of that, you're not going to end up having to cross the road and go up by the woods because you're not going to be able to encroach into that grass area next to the building. There's not enough space there. You'd eat basically concrete onto the corner of those those wings there. So you'd have to come through, cross over up to the woods. So I I would be concerned about the space that we have there to do that. Okay. But if you come through the woods this way, straight on through. Yeah, that that'd be the path you'd have to take through the woods. So along here instead of around like this, come right along that.
It's maybe more scenic.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were talking about at first to begin with.
And you just follow the road.
I was just following the road.
I got you.
Where people are already following it.
They have bikes there.
Had a thing here. Um, people could come in off the halfway or they could come in off of this way.
You'd you'd be just south of wetlands.
Right here.
Right near the buses.
You'd be on the north side of the busty bus bus lot.
Again, it's it's definitely more scenic than being.
Right.
Out along.
And still removed from our students.
Are the trails used, are the trails around here used by the elementary school? I mean, there's trails through here. So are those used by the elementary school? They can be.
Yeah, I believe they are. I don't know how much, but believe it.
So we're. Yeah, so I mean, that that trail comes all the way around, all the way around that marsh. So we need to have, if that's even viable from your guys' perspective. Almost basically put a trail straight through, cutting through the middle.
Yeah.
And then around the tennis courts.
I mean, it almost even go.
That's what I think, it's a parallel.
We just redid the test.
Oh, that's true. Yeah. That is true. That is true.
That little jog won't hurt today. It's still, it's still going to be a safer area crossing right there than.
Yeah.
Out here. Wouldn't have no light, any light required.
Yeah, well. You'll. You're right, right. But, yeah. We have to be willing just to have other opportunities, discussions of what might be viable and that, um, that we would be willing to work with it because willing to support, but at the same time, I I driver side, safety. I mean, it's.
The board has said repeatedly, they want to be good neighbors. I mean, we want, we want our schools to be good neighbors to the county. We just it's just the concerns about safety.
Right, right. Tell, tell these folks, uh, if you can, some of the concerns you've expressed with putting up a light that doesn't need warrants.
Well, um, unwarranted light, um, so I know the thought was to put it to flash during the off peak hours. Um, experiences that's happened. People get used to the light being on a flash. And then once it is enact, it is activated and they go through the intersection, they really aren't paying attention and they end up running the light. So then you get um, that way. People don't like lights when they have to stop and there's nobody sitting at the intersection, which a lot of time this light will be just sitting there. Even if you keep it activated at all times, um, people won't want to stop on Union Chapel. So you'll get a tendency, people running them. Could it be activated by, could it be activated by cars that are only exits? It's, it could be, um, activated with loops, um.
I mean, right now, everyone outbound from that property stopped. It's a stop sign, but they, so the only yeah, I agree. Um, I mean, I go downtown early morning and late at night. I mean, we're on flashers and then we're on regular. So I think people will adopt. As long as you're yellow flashing through on Union Chapel during the daytime, unless you, you can drop off and pick up. People are already stopping coming out of that property. I mean, they're used to stopping, so I don't think they're going to. So if it was a switch light, I think that would be nice at, you know, if you time it, but uh, I don't see a whole lot of running the red light because that's people flying through the T turn. They're either making a hard right or a hard left without stopping and they're not, they're not going to just.
I think it's the other ways, this way, running that, running.
Right.
Right, but I'm just saying, it's that, but leave it, but leave it yellow.
Yeah.
I mean, once it turns red, people will stop and leave it yellow until flashing yellow until it needs to be turned on. I mean, other than the times we would designate or whatever, that would, that would make more sense to me. I mean, if there was that was going to be doing it. I I agree. Nothing worse than driving downtown and getting stopped by a light and there's absolutely not a car anywhere around.
Yeah.
Jumping, jumping.
Yep.
Is, and Coldwater is a mechanized light. It's a loop light. I mean, I I personally think you could do a loop light here because you don't want to put around a timing because you get a, you get a football game where you need people to get out of there. You got everybody, you know, you got a full, completely full track, whatever.
Gets full.
It needs.
Football game we have.
Theory.
That middle school parking lot is packed because we'll, when we have every one of our football games, I mean, they're.
I mean, a light is the, is realistically the the best alternative from a safety standpoint and keeping it running right along here. This seems to me to be a little bit of Mickey Mouse, I guess. They're just from a logistical, all the things that go in through there with drainage tiles, putting it there, all that, but could be to a story, but.
On this west side, where, how are you guys tying into the Puffer Belly? Are you going up through the church?
It's, yeah, and through the church, yeah.
So you're just going to pull into like their entrance way?
There's going to be a trail that cuts across the church property or along the.
So you're going on the east.
Along the creek, right?
Or west.
That's along.
West side of Corbin up to the church.
North side of the Roy Dela Grange.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Offside of that ditch.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Dela Green Ditch.
And it'll cross at the three way.
Just north of the three, well, just north of the, the Dela Grange, Roy Dela Grange.
Being meant for that crossing.
Is there a liability to the county if a signal goes there and something would happen there that had it not been for that signal, might not have otherwise happened?
Well, any of that. Yeah, if it doesn't need warrants, you always have that risk. Question is.
And how do they know it doesn't have warrants? I mean, somebody had to do some serious digging.
I don't think it'd be that hard. Be surprised how easy.
Really? Okay. I'm corrected.
Two hours or three hours that it was warranted.
And they're going to give you everything they got.
We have public records.
Public record, I get that, yeah. That's exactly why we don't recommend the signal. We have liability, it'd be in our right of way. You have a concern, we have a liability.
Sure.
And and signals, we have crashes, signals all the time.
Right.
They're not a pansia for safety.
Right.
But we've gotten comfortable crossing Coldwater, Dupont, um, D Bowl with the trails at lights. So we've accepted that all along, correct? I mean, the trails have, the county has. So, yeah. I mean, most of, most of the major road crosses are at a light, obviously.
Not necessarily. We cross Ludwig Road, we cross Cook Road, we cross, uh.
We had an accident at Cook Road. I mean, I'm saying is the major, at the major traffic spots, being there, you at least have a straight shot. People should be able to see more. I'm saying is when you've got right off of a turn, right into the parallel there, that's a perpendicular cross versus a parallel with the rest of the traffic. That's where the risk is, I think. I I think if you're driving parallel to the ground to the.
You have trails crossing all kinds of driveways, like what you experienced there that do not have signals.
And do they have the same traffic flow we have at a school system multiple times a day?
I would think, I, I'm sure we can find you some that have a lot more.
Trail crosses, uh, Sam's Club, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Goes down Sam's Club, so that entrance. Entrance there.
Yeah, the trail on Lima Road crosses a number of different unsignalized intersections.
In the, I mean, because obviously, obviously we're a public entity as well, and this is a property that was acquired by the school for the school academic purposes and school purposes. What is the statutory authority for acquiring land for purposes of trails and things like that? I mean, at one point, we, somebody was going to talk about eminent domaining us, and I know that that couldn't happen, at least our attorney said that wasn't a viable uh, thing. So what's, what's the underlying statute that, I mean, because NERC isn't a government agency. I mean, you're a cooperative or you're an agency that or a nonprofit or something, uh, that's with all the commissioners, correct? I mean, if I understand.
Yeah, it wouldn't be us. That would be, it would have to be the commissioners.
The county.
The county, the county government.
That specific county then, so you're, you're working on behalf of the other counties to try to keep things moving.
Right.
Yeah, got you, okay. Okay. Yeah. Commissioners are the only elected plus us.
Yeah.
That they're involved with this. Right? So the ones that have to answer to the public. Specifically.
Right.
Yeah.
The tough part.
Yeah.
So like I said, other than that issue for the grant, we have not heard much until recently with our project about the trail again. So, uh, I think we would be willing to work with, we've talked about having a dialogue again. I mean, we, we've, it's been radio silence until until our, um, our project came up, uh, this came discussion again. So I think, you know, it's fair to continue the discussion, I guess, but um, let's look for different opportunities and solutions. I mean, even with, I I I cringe at putting in our, our sidewalk, knowing that probably when they do the north, the the extension north, it's going to probably, I don't know how wide they're moving Coldwater out, but what's the city doing? I don't, I haven't seen the exact plans for yet.
That's city limits right there. Up right there, the corner.
Right though.
There's a little bit.
They'll go, they'll go to make the intersection, right?
But that's it.
That's it.
Oh, for the north.
They'll do their, they'll do the intersection, what they need for that stop properly.
Dental offices.
Dental office, some of that office on the right north side is in the city. I knew, I knew there was pizza that, so yeah.
I mean, do you have any other suggestions, you know, to address RCT concerns, how we can fix this?
I think, let me just, what I hear is they're saying, I think we're overthinking. That's what I hear them saying from a, from their experiences, what.
Right, right.
I mean, I mean.
Maybe that's it, just maybe share the data and let the board.
We'll get you some trail counts. We will look and see how many incidents have occurred at crossings in front of in in inner near schools. We can, we have the crash data, so we can look at it's only reported crashes, of course. We can at least dig that information, we can pull that information. And that's relatively easy. We, we have just recently, in the last few years, we separate all bicycle and pedestrian traffic crashes. But look at those specifically separately. Don't overlook something as we, uh, take into account the vulnerability of those particular modes of travel. All right, talk for just a second about the grant that allows us to do some of the things we've talked about. What sort of strings are attached?
Um, for the next level trails grant that I had applied for and, um, we did not get the award. Um, we just had to, I was hoping to have all the parcels um, purchased and then alls we had to do was the construction of it. Um, because through the Puffer Belly, um, we had right of way that we had to purchase through that and a lot of it got delayed due to COVID and then we had a whole subdivision we had to go through and get permission from the homeowners. And so I was hoping through this, the grant um, to have all the right of way purchased for this piece of the trail. And then alls we had to do was construction.
So outside of, of, uh, well, construction delays will cause more cost in construction. And it just seems to be what's been happening lately.
Yes.
Outside of those increases, what do the delays, what will the delays cost us?
Um, it just depends on what happens, like, you know, if we run into unsuitable soils or something like that. Um, if we run into a utility that we didn't think was there or something like that. Um, I know on heading down further with the subdivisions, we are going to have to build like a small retaining wall to, because of the mounds that come through from the subdivisions to hold that back. So.
This eventually will connect over to Mateo Park, right?
Eventually, yes. And then we'd also like to go up, um, Puff Road because we have the Cedar Creek Trail that is coming in on Hirsch. Over to Halter, which that would take them down, yeah, over to Leo Cedarville. And then eventually into Grable because we're doing a, uh, the big bridge project in Grable, the. Uh, by the Leo Cedarville, uh, park. We're redoing that so we can have a trail on there also. And then that would take you into Grable.
Have you spoken to any of the residents along on the south side of Union Chapel yet to even, uh, entertain?
We have not because if we would come out of the church. Uh, we're doing like kind of a mid-block crossing right there at Corbin, you would have to actually. Catty corner cross through that whole intersection that is even worse than your intersection.
Reason is, right here you got.
There's a four-way stop there right now, is that right? A three-way, three-way stop.
Three-way stop.
So there's discussion of a traffic circle there someday. Corbin and Union Chapel.
Have you? Roundabout at Corbin and Union Chapel?
It's up to these gentlemen here to decide. Or actually Nelson, I guess, ultimately. Yeah, we've got a lot of conversation.
It's been thought of it, but it's not been pursued.
And how would you drive a trail through something like that, like, like we did out on Handley and, uh.
Can you have a bridge off the ditch? Back south and then go across the road?
There's not enough room in there because of the subdivision, the Tuscanese subdivision.
Well, it's evident we're not gonna get it solved today.
And we're not allowed to take action in a session.
No, I get it, I get it.
You, you said that you didn't get the grant, so you don't have all the right of ways from Auburn all the way to.
You guys are the last parcel I need.
All right. I thought you said you didn't have the money for that, but okay, you did get it then, okay. That includes all the cost of moving utilities and things.
Mm-hmm.
So those are gonna take the polls further north then.
How soon do you think you can get us that information on the traffic stuff? Oh.
I don't know what that takes.
Yeah, I got. Like. Bicycle and Ped Planner is out for a few days yet. Um, it shouldn't take us more than a. Analyzing the crash data for the, the locations will take the longest, but a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Shouldn't take too long.
Let's, I think, leave it at that. We'll get us that information and.
And so pending this for a couple of weeks doesn't do us any harm.
No.
Somebody said, mentioned something about a bridge. One of you, I don't remember who it was.
Well, it must've been the attorney.
What would that entail?
Sure, bridge.
Bridge, oh.
No, those are, what bridge are you talking about?
Those are pretty expensive to build. I did jokingly. I was just trying to deflect.
Hey, he's got ideas.
Now, the problem is, 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 is we all know bridges are extremely expensive to build. Pedestrian. You gotta span. They have two roads and have it bust, you know, truck, truck height. That's a trail, that's gotta be. Be fun, might look kinda cool, but I don't think the taxpayer.
Middle school bridge. Right under it. The grand entrance.
Dirt, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't.
All right. I think unless you guys have anything else to share with us at this point, any board members, I'll start daring anything else from you, Liz, Christie.
I just wanna say I'm excited to try to be able to find a solution. I really appreciate the trails and what they bring to our community. I appreciate everybody's effort on trying to find that and balancing that as a board member and just thinking about. It being a different kind of intersection with the children. That's my crux, but I do wanna say thank you for all your time and effort and trying to meet. To find an answer and a compromise. I really do value that.
Do you have anything?
No, I would just echo that, that we're all in favor for a trail. I love the trails. It's just a matter of safety and our responsibility to our parents and children.
Understand.
I have nothing else to add, but we'll turn to superintendent.
Yeah, I'm happy to help facilitate any more conversations. Ho- hopefully we can just keep this dialogue going and. Uh, we'll help to make that happen. Anytime we bring our board together, we just have to follow open door law.
Understand. Well, that's in part why I'm the only commissioner here. But let me, let me just echo some of what's been said. I mean, we, we do understand, uh, the concerns. I mean, your constituents or my constituents as well. And we don't wanna see any peril come to adults, students, anybody, so. We will work to, to get to the best solution.
Yeah.
In the meantime, if you could, maybe before that, before you get the data, get us the list of those locations. Where the, our schools, where they, where they cross.
We can go do our own.
I mean, do my own investigation on that and see what those.
We do our own due diligence like we did for our own, because I think we were shocked at how busy it was when we did our.
It was.
We, we were actually quite shocked at. The quickness of cars coming in and out of our, as much people standing there. Standing there and it's like.
Ton of dolls and.
Yeah.
All right, no other action from this. I'll entertain a motion for, uh. Motion adjourned, motion to vote, second by Mr. Bar Chris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Gotta do all the paperwork, you know that.
Indeed.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's time.
Ah, thank you.